Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I'm Patrick Wommack from Bay Presbyterian Church. If you go out the end of Terry Street across 41, take South Bay Drive, and you'll find us over on the right. I also want to bring greetings from my hometown of Waynesville, North Carolina, that recently has suffered from hurricanes and Fire Chief Joey Webb. I left one of these patches over with the Fire Chief today at the department, and I want to bring greetings from my hometown as well as my church here. Thank you for this privilege. Let's pray. Almighty God, our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads, we gladly surrender ourselves unto You, the One who is altogether good. We thank You for Your kind and good providence. For here we gather in positions of leadership, governance, and service in a country that has been blessed by You down through these many years with liberty, freedom, and justice. However imperfectly those have been manifested, we are grateful nevertheless that all good things come from You. And we pray that You will bless the meeting of this council this evening, that each will have wisdom and discernment from You, that, Father, You will grant it, that we might be governed well in Benita Springs as we have been, and, Lord, that You'll lead us in the way that You want us to go. I pray that government will be conducted here in such a way that it will be a model for the rest of the state and even the world. So we ask Your blessing, all in the name of the One whose name is above every name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance on a count of three. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, how about a roll call?
Councilmember Boges.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
I'd like to make a motion that we let Councilwoman Carr in on the meeting.
Second.
Have any other comment? Roll call, please.
This is on the vote. Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Councilmember Carr, are you there? And then lastly, going back to the roll call, Councilmember Purdon. And I see he is not, he is not here. So we have a quorum.
Okay.
And it's been approved that Councilmember Carr participate remotely.
Very good, very good. Mayors, welcome. Well, folks, this is my last, last meeting up here on the podium. It's been a real pleasure and an honor to live in, to work for the city that I've loved all my life. My grandmother bought a restaurant on Old 41 in 1948, which happened to be the year I was born. But anyways, the people choose, Mike Gibson chose Mike, Mike Gibson, who was experienced up here for, I guess, eight years, and he was my deputy mayor. So I have all the confidence in the world in Mike to lead us forward into the future. We're in better shape than we were four years ago, even with all the hurricanes and stuff. We're doing fine. So thanks for coming and give Mike all your support. Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Okay, public comment on the agenda. Please come forward to the podium. No comments. Okay. Presentation. We're going to honor Ray Sandelli. All the council, please come forward. Sit up here, out in front.
You, Ray.
And Mrs. Sandelli as well, please. It's a team effort.
One can't without the other one. Thank you, sir, for your service. Thank you for taking care of him.
Commissioner Sandelli, it's with great gratitude that we'd like to present a certificate of recognition proudly presented to Ray Sandelli, Lee County Commissioner, District Three, in appreciation of your dedication and commitment to the citizens of Benita Springs and all of Lee County through your service on the Lee County Board of County Commissioners August 2019 through November 2024. Signed, Rick Steinmeier, on November 5, 2024. And we wanted to take this opportunity to hand this to you, and we have one other because it's a team effort. This is for Mrs. Sandelli, for all of your support to our citizens as well. And I know each of the council, mayor and council, would like to share good thoughts with you as well, but my first memory is I was a brand-new city manager appointed, and Commissioner called to say, hey, I live right down the street from you. I'd like to come in the office and say hi. And I said, oh, boy.
Only because I heard great things about her, you know. You have to do a little homework before you just.
So he extremely, immediately made me feel welcome and supported and teamwork. And so that is the complete essence of what we've received from Lee County with your leadership. And with that, I know that the motto of the United States Navy Blue Angels is teamwork, professionalism, and precision. And that completely describes your attitude towards us and the citizens. So thank you.
Ray has spent a whole lifetime in service to the people of this country, between the Navy and the Blue Angels and Lee County Commissioner. And I call him up, and we had breakfast one time, and I made him pay for his breakfast because nobody pays for my breakfast. Thank you.
Ray, congratulations on the successful four years with the county commission. Much success on your next efforts in life. I always remember our talking about how you got a call from the governor, and it was a surprise, and probably even more of a surprise with how much work was involved and the amount of time and effort. Yeah, yeah. But I know how much work's involved being on a city council, but the county's commission is probably 10 times as much. So thank you for all your hard work and efforts.
Ray Sandelli is the epitome of a true public servant. He has a servant's heart, and I remember when you got appointed, and I was like, who is this guy? Because I know everybody, I think, right? And then they're like, he's, you know, he's this pointed guy, he's a former Blue Angel, badass guy. And then I meet you, and I was just, I've been amazed since the first time till the last. And you're just, you are, you're a selfless man. You worked hard for your country, you worked hard for our county. As commissioners, or I'm sorry, as councilpeople, the only thing we can hope from our commissioner, how it's set up, is the one who represents Benita is going to answer the phone when they call. And every single time I've ever called, you've always answered. You've been here for Benita, you've been here for our country, and you've been here as a friend, and I just appreciate you. And I'm very excited and happy to give this to you, and thank you for your service to our city, to our county, and to our country. Thank you, Ray. Congratulations. Thank you.
Ray Sandelli, thank you so much for all your hard work and dedication. I've only been on council for a couple of years, but the few times that I have got to spend with you, I always knew that I could ask you and have any questions answered and get them from you. So I appreciate that, and I wish you all the best.
Lieutenant. Ray, you were one of the first people to congratulate me, wish me well, and to echo what a lot of people here said. You truly were the guy that if you called and didn't get you directly, you were back within an hour or two. You always listened. You've shown everybody that I know respect. And I think what I really took away from you is whether you personally were for or against something, you always made your decisions by what's on best, what's the best interest of the county and the city. You're the epitome of a leader, and I've been very proud to work with you, Ray.
Yeah, I first met Ray, I think we were at Starbucks. We had breakfast right after the governor made the appointment, and we talked about flooding and other issue. And I've been around Ray a lot of times. I can still remember, we were at a club meeting together, and a lady had a blowout because she had a chuck hole in the road.
Do you remember that?
Yeah, I remember that.
Amy Corvus.
Yeah.
I put two steps into the door.
Yeah, yeah. But that, but he's everything everybody else has said. He's a great guy, and you have to be a great guy to be a Blue Angel because there's no room for error. If there's an error, then you don't make it. So he did a great job as county commissioner. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Can I just say something, too? Oh, thank you. Ray, like everybody said, you are fabulous. You have done our city tremendous pride by being there always for us, and I'm going to miss you at our Friday mornings where we get together at 8:30 at Horizon or MPO. Because I always knew there'd be a smile and a hug and just common sense from your mouth if you spoke. And so I will definitely miss you tremendously. But we'll see you around.
In 2012, we moved down from Tampa, and, you know, we had raised our kids in that house. We came down here for some business reasons, and the company I was with had an office in Naples and one in Fort Myers. And so we were driving around, and we came across Benita Springs, and you think, gosh, this kind of feels right here. And so we're looking at this place we're going to rent for a year and stuff like this, and walk into the bedroom there, has the same bedspread that we had on the one up in Tampa, and I said, that's a sign. So we've been, we've been here since 2012. I could not be more proud of this community, for the people that are here. These are my friends, business associates, and neighbors, and I have great respect for all of you. My wife, a woman of infinite patience and guidance and stuff. We've been married 42 years, and it's, it's worked out really well. We have three lovely kids, they're all grown up, you know, the bank of Dad is closed, you know, and stuff like this. But thank you all for welcoming us, continuing to do good work, and even though this chapter is closing, I'm sure you'll see me around. So thank you all, and be safe.
Come on back around, folks.
We have a special video presentation we'd like to queue for a moment. Yes, please.
Two other charities that you may want to consider locally is Love in the Name of Christ, Love Inc., the other one is Benita Assistance, because each one of those does things that complement what feed thy neighbor in this city, and also Red Cross and United Way Office. If that will go countywide or bigger, local stuff, you get the money spent for the problem that is there, and people are given money. At 5:00, we will be doing scenes where we are handing out the food to people that really need it. I too have been out to Hickory Island, some of the other more damaged areas of Benita, and it is horrific. But the one thing, the people there, no matter how bad their loss was, is in good spirits. They're helping one another, they're not complaining, they're happy for anything that gets done. What Mike Gibson said, help your neighbor if they need some help, and if not, maybe you can find somebody that does. I want everyone to have a happy, enjoyable, safe Fourth of July weekend. I want everybody to celebrate our nation's 244th year birthday. I also want you to realize that we all need to be proud to be Americans. I am proud to be an American. I'm here to, first of all, wish everyone a very merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, happy everything. I want to wish everybody a happy new year, may it be full of good health, prosperity, peace, and tranquility in the world. We're all blessed to live in one of the best cities in the United States and in Florida, Benita Springs, but we're all blessed at living in the greatest country in the world. Hi, I'm Fred Forbes, City Councilman, District Six. I'm over here in Rosemary Park. Feed thy neighbor as brought over 400 freshly prepared hot meals, barbecue chicken and rice, peas and carrots, dessert, beverages, and a lot free for the people. So come one, come all, and pick up this, Antonio, the big Tony, who is chairman of
Councilmember Albert Einstein said, the only source of knowledge is experience, and life is like riding a bicycle. To keep your balance, you must keep moving. And if anyone on this council has kept moving more, I don't know them. You have constantly been a source of energy and excitement for us. You've been a mentor to many of us for the past eight years. You show confidence in your staff. Your support of the city is unfounding, and you have a true servant's heart. And we will miss talking to you early in the morning on 7:30 in the morning is our wake-up calls on our way to work. We'll miss your advice, but we know you're a friend, and you know, we know you're right nearby, so we can keep in touch with you as well. And we do have a special gift for Carolyn as well. I know she wasn't able to make it this evening, but it takes a team. And with that, the city of Benita Springs gratefully acknowledges Fred Forbes, AIA, for your outstanding and complimentary contributions to the citizens of Benita Springs. Thank you for your service.
Those of us who are close to him call him Uncle Fred. So Uncle Fred has been probably one of the best mentors that I could have hoped for. He was around when I ran the first time and didn't even win, and he was still there helping me lick my wounds and get back on the horse. He's been on the right side of almost every major decision the city's made, and he has perspective that nobody else has. People don't realize, he was on the fire commission, termed out before he even got on council, so he's been serving this city for longer than anybody. And it's been an honor to work with you. I appreciate our trips up to Tallahassee and all the rest, and I'm really going to miss having you up here.
Fred, I want to thank you and congratulations of eight years of serving on council. Two years when I came in onto council, you welcomed me with open arms and really showed me great leadership, and I want to thank you for that. We have had a few fun trips to Tally, where I could be complaining about the walking, and I look at Fred, and he's right there every step of the way. And, you know, your time, your effort, it's all going to go unnoticed, and we appreciate and thank you for everything.
Fred, when I first came here, you were one of the people that was working with the community, so I've been here for your eight years on council. And I think one of the things that people won't know is all the things that happened in our city that you can't see that Fred was a part of, and that is our stormwater structure. He was a tireless champion for that. He understood it more than a lot of people who thought they knew better, and Fred was right. So that's an incredible legacy to note, that the safety of our citizens and our city are part and parcel to your efforts, Fred. And we didn't agree on everything, but I will tell you that nobody worked harder. You could see that. And if I had half the political capital that Fred has, I could probably run for president. But he's been a phenomenal councilman, so thank you, Fred, for everything you've done.
Fred and I spent a year traveling back and forth to Fort Myers Administrative Center, working on the County Resiliency Task Force. And I always looked forward to those trips because I knew that Fred was going to mentor me and pass on valuable information. We didn't violate the sunshine law, Derek, okay? But he certainly filled me in on what was happening in engineering terms with stormwater projects, drainage projects, and the things that make Benita Springs great. So I will always cherish those trips that we had and the teaching moments that he gave me. So Fred, congratulations on your completion of your term, and I hope you have many more years of just being able to do the things you want to do. Thank you.
Well, Fred, I remember you from the Republican Club, years and years. You're always, you're always there. And you just keep on, you're like energy. You just keep on moving, and I appreciate all your work and your wisdom and your engineering and your architecture degrees, and we're going to miss you. So thank you. Thank you, Fred.
I'll just add, Fred, love you, you're the best, and I very much appreciate how much you shared your knowledge and your insight and your time. You'll be missed, but we'll see you, and you're wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all the wonderful things in the video. First of all, I've worked with two different city managers, and by far, Arlene and Matt is her assistant are hard to beat. And also, same with Derek, our city attorney. Sometimes we don't agree, but we usually end up agreeing because he makes me agree. And the city is a great place. A lot of things have been done here, a lot of things that are little known about that are really great by itself, and I enjoyed, actually, it was eight and a half years because I was one of those naughty people that voted to move us from a March election to a November election. And that, but I think it was, it's better to have more people vote on electing people than less people. So that's, it's been a great ride. That's what Jack Nicklaus has said when he gave up being a golf, golf pro professional. So thank you very much for the ceremony.
Well, thank you, folks. Get organized here. Let's go to consent agenda items.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I'd like Laura Taylor to give us, is she here? Give us a brief explanation of what a $56,000 podium looks like. Is that a number M?
Hello. So this podium would be the completion of our upgrade of the city council chambers that we started in 2022. It started with the custom build and design of the dais, along with the monitors that were added for each counselor. We did update the control room, we've done the cameras, the monitors that you see on the wall, and this would be a smart podium that's also custom-built to match the dais. It has custom-built electronics that will tie into our system. It is ADA compliant, it has a document camera, a movable microphone, HDMI interface, and it's a bring-your-own devices that can plug right into the system. It has a touchscreen. It also has a timer for clocks for the audience and council members, and it has, you know, programming for control surfaces at the podium, the control room, and also the clerk's position. It includes installation, a warranty, and it all integrates with the existing custom-built control room and technology.
Very good. Motion, we've got a call.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Okay. Five-year capital improvement program. Arlene, please.
Actually, I'll probably, I can probably take this one.
Shall I read the title?
Yes, please.
This is a first reading of an ordinance. This is a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting the 2024-2025 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program Annual Update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, council. This is, Florida law requires that we update our CIP every year by the final part of the year. This CIP is the first reading. This reflects all the changes on our carryforward CIP, any changes that were made during the budget approval process that you did earlier in the year. So there's nothing new in this, but we do have to adopt an ordinance every year before the close of the year on this. So it's just finalizing what you've already voted on, just in case there's any.
But this is only for one year that we're actually voting on?
Yeah, you're voting for this year. It's the five-year CIP, and every year you update it and you adopt a new five-year CIP, and you're just essentially moving those items down the line.
Okay.
Motion to move to second reading.
Second.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purden.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Very good.
Next item, mayor, is one of mine. Sorry, I'm talking more than usual tonight, but this is another two parcels. We have come to final terms and settlement with respect to the Benita Grand right-of-way acquisition. So this is all part of the settlement with BG Mine and the park lands that the city has up at the border of the Kiker Preserve. So we're still proceeding, we're up to the final pieces of land. All of the land and acquisition costs are being borne by BG Mine. We need to enter in two additional final settlements with two parcels listed in here and the amounts listed, all that money is coming out of the escrow fund. So just looking for your approval so we can file those.
And this is a lot, you got two more parcels, and then we can.
I believe we have one or two larger parcels that we're still working through, evaluations on, but we've received almost all the smaller pieces. We've done settlements with the arch diocese, we've got land from the school board and from Lee County, so everything is really moving along on this.
Are we gonna have access to the park before we build a road, or?
Yes, this is, what we're doing is we're perfecting legal access. We believe that we have probably most elements of access at this point. What we do not have is sufficient right-of-way to build a road. So that's where the design is coming into compliance on that. And we will have probably one, maybe two more parcels that will require more conversation about the terms of the settlement, but right now it's just evaluation. So we're getting through kind of the easy ones at this point.
And then we'll be able to walk, walk back there?
There is a, there is a dirt road that currently exists. I believe, does it go all the way up to the end, or? Pretty, it goes pretty close to the end. I wouldn't take it in your car, you might want a four-by-four.
Or would I walk it?
All right, good, we're getting closer, folks.
Motion to approve settlement agreement between Benita Springs City and BG Mines.
Second.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purden.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
That's one for me.
City manager, I guess.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. We have been in communication with Lee County, and we understand at yesterday's county commission meeting, Commissioner Sandelli brought up an opportunity for the city to continue to move forward with the beach nourishment. So there's a re-nourishment project that is in existence already. We would be asking for an amendment to that. We were already scheduled to begin the re-nourishment project, and unfortunately Hurricanes Helene and Milton greatly affected the shoreline. We've had some new surveying done, and we understand we're gonna be able to receive some emergency permits, but the cost of the project has gone up significantly. Lee County is willing to loan us the funds for the project so that we can keep the project moving on time with no interest for three to four years, and we're asking for direction from you all to continue that. And if we could come to an agreement, we would bring that to our December 4 meeting. County Commission would bring it to their December 3 meeting.
Okay, now, the beach goes off and it drops real quick. The sandbar is over top of Hickory Boulevard, is what I see. That the sandbar is, it dangerously drops off.
We lost approximately 30 to 34 feet of shoreline in the wet sand. So the idea would be to pump the sand, the wet, the natural wet sand from the Gulf onto shore.
It's not gonna affect the property rights of anybody.
No, sir.
Right.
Correct.
Motion to amend Lee County agreement seeking long-term funding with Lee County Commissioners through the Florida Department, and then to seek funding through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection.
Second.
The idea, what was saying is to clarify, is that we will seek, through the DEP, as we were able to be successful during Ian, we're gonna seek reimbursement, and if we receive, if we receive that reimbursement, we would reimburse Lee County first.
So you're asking for, to go after it, or you're asking?
Not at this time. What we're asking is to work with Lee County for an interim loan in order to keep the project moving forward, with the understanding that if we seek additional funds and we receive them, we would reimburse the county.
So, Arlene, for the people out there and that are watching home, if we decided not to this, which would be absolutely insane, the cost of the city would be exorbitant because we'd have to move all that equipment back down here. We're actually saving a lot of money by doing this now, correct?
Well, you're already initiated to complete the project right now. You already have the surveys that show you that this needs to be done, and you have the ability to receive emergency permits to be able to do it. So you'd have to remobilize.
So, shorthand, the one big, the two changes are, one, we have an interlocal agreement on re-nourishment, so what we're asking is for authority to negotiate a bridge loan in the meantime. The terms of that bridge loan would be from Lee County to help us cover the cost increases since that time, and we would be required to, if we receive any reimbursement through FEMA or other sources, to pay Lee County back first. The other codicil to that would probably be, we probably need to get some more flowers for Commissioner Sandelli to thank him for bringing this to us.
He just left.
Okay, we don't need a vote?
We do.
We do?
We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
We broke all.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purden.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Thank you. My last update is we're continuing to meet with FEMA representatives regarding our submission for November 18th. We fully anticipate to meet that deadline. We have been working with our consultants, and with that, I'd like John Dahmer to come forward. We may be recommending a slight revision to our land development code.
Good evening, mayor and council. Unfortunately, over the past couple of years, we have had the opportunity to become very intimate with our flood ordinance and look at it through a number of ways. That has revealed to us, there are several portions of that code that work very well, and there were also a couple portions of that code that we realized were out of date and probably need to be updated. One of those deals with repetitive loss, and what we have realized is, when we originally adopted, and I say "we," as the city originally adopted this section of our flood ordinance, it was actually part of a model ordinance that the state was promoting at the time. That was over a decade ago, and since that time, a lot has changed. So all of our neighbors, for the most part, have made changes to repetitive loss and how they look at it, and kept it consistent with how FEMA defines the terms and how they define the events. What I would like council to provide guidance on is allow us to go back and craft some language that would be a little more consistent with current FEMA regulations, and allow us to redefine the repetitive loss events.
We would have to bring any draft language back to you, but we like, we'd like direction to move forward, we start bringing that information forward.
I think we need to move forward with doing exactly what John's talking.
Agreed.
I think we received direction, we don't need a vote, we just needed, we need a direction to start work.
Thank you all very much.
And that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, Laura Carr, do you have anything to say for the mayor and council report?
Well, we'll miss you, but I'll see you at the next meeting, and congratulations to all those that won their election, and welcome back, mayor-elect Mike Gibbons, Gibson, I wanted to mention that on Fort Myers Beach, the American Sand Sculpture Championship is finally returning. The last time it was there, I believe, was 2019, and so in November, on November 21st through the 24th, at Diamond Head Beach Resort, they're gonna have the sand sculpting championship going on. It's quite amazing, and it's beautiful. The other thought I had was to mention that RSW is having new air service, and there's seven, I think, airlines that are offering service, that's limited, but it includes Wilmington, North Carolina, New Haven, Connecticut, South Bend, Indiana, Chicago, O'Hare, Providence, Rhode Island, Manchester, New Hampshire, Ottawa, Canada, Montreal, Canada, and Charlotte. So it's really exciting that we're gonna have more access to our beautiful.
She dropped something.
Northern cities.
Yes, there is a gun. Fred, you got anything to say? I think Laura, you're done.
Somehow she disappeared.
Don't think so. Well, I do want to say, I really want to thank the good work of the staff. Usually, anytime I ask them for something, they got it for me, and we got one of the best staffs in the state, so, bar none. And that's, that's my swan song.
Okay, how about Nigel now?
I get to agree with Fred on something, so, totally, if it wasn't for our staff, who always make us look better than we probably are, and we're blessed as a city. The one event that we have coming up, and I'm sorry that Commissioner Sandelli's not here, but Veterans Day is Monday, November 11th, and the time is 9:00 a.m. I think you're all gonna be pleasantly surprised, staff, once again, has been working with our Veterans Advisory Board, great group of people, so that'll be at 9:00 a.m., and then at 1:00 p.m., they'll start the festivities. The Legion Hall is finally gonna be back open after all the damage from the hurricanes, so they're excited about that. And Lieutenant General Blum was nice enough to say that he will also be there for that, so they're thrilled. But please, if you can, come and honor our veterans and your family members that have served, 9 o'clock on Monday morning, and I promise you, we're done by 10:10.
Yeah, I got a few things, so bear with me. One thing I wanted to talk about first was the power surges in Benita Springs. You know, we're still continuing to see those. And you go to the best source to figure out what's going on, it's the linemen that are out there trying to fix things. So I spent some time with some of the linemen, I said, "What's going on?" What's going on is that after Ian, not all the repairs have yet been made, okay? And as a result, when Milton came through, we were already in a sort of a compromised electrical system in the city of Benita Springs because not all those repairs had happened. Milton came through with a lot of wind and a lot of salt water in the air. You've heard the story about the salt water got into the switch boxes and transformers and so forth, which was true. As those blew, the, the goal of Florida Power and Light was to get everybody powered back up, but you were restoring power on a system that was already compromised. And so the problem is now is that because of the path of Helene and the path of Milton, there's no real access to equipment that's needed to replace what's been blown. You've seen transformers blow up, you've seen the switch boxes which distribute the power out to homes and businesses fail. And so what's going on is we're continuing to overutilize the remaining transformers and switch boxes, okay, that were already compromised. Bottom line is that we're gonna continue to have these power surges for a long time. And I know that people have had problems with their circuit boards and so forth blowing out in their televisions, their ovens, their stoves, their refrigerators, you know, that I'm sure Lowe's and Home Depot are doing a great business, Bill Smith and so forth, but it's something that's gonna continue. And I talked to John Dahmer about it, and it just, I thought John might talk a little bit about the impact of the, what this means for the city facilities in terms of our hardware and our data. I think our data's backed up to the cloud, but just thought John might say a few things.
Sure. So I know that, you know, anytime you have surges or power outages, it does take a toll on whatever's plugged into that line. And so we started making sure that all of our battery backups were there and surge protectors were in place because it does infinitely age equipment as it goes along, which is gonna mean that we're gonna have to replace computers or servers or whatever it is, Wi-Fi equipment, much sooner than we normally would. So in an effort to kind of reduce budget impacts, we have tried to do as much as we can to protect even more than we normally do, because if these items are on backorder or delayed, we're not looking at a period of a couple of months. I mean, who knows when we're gonna be back to a situation where we don't have to deal with this anymore. So we had looked at maybe 18 months just to be safe and try to get all of those equipment backed up on protective devices, so. Other than that, there's really not much else we can do. I don't know if we can predict anything, and I don't know if we know anything that we didn't know before, but at least now there might be a defined reason as to why we keep getting surges and power outages.
But John, so if you unplug all your devices, that would prevent them being damaged.
It would, but they.
If you're not using them, you know, you're gonna use them, unplug them, but it would save electric bill too, a little bit.
That works on a computer, it doesn't work as well on a refrigerator, but yes, sir.
Yeah, so unplug all your stuff, yes.
I want to point out something that happened at this, the last one, that was different before. Before, whenever FPL would turn on power, they would have a crew real close to where they turned the power on. Here, they were turning it on remotely without a crew. Now, this is, this is true, I know of at least three different buildings. The Magnus rooftop, Hunter's Ridge clubhouse, BSU big pumping station, three-phase services. They turned them on, and they came on with one phase on. And a three-phase motor sits, and it'll hum, it vibrates, but every hour that that thing's doing that, it's getting hot, and that takes an hour or so of service life off that motor. And that, that's a problem. And most of the people that owned those buildings, they knew they had three phases, they didn't know that their air conditioners were three-phase, and that they would try and run if the thermostat called for. So fortunately, I was able to talk to Jim Magnus and tell him, "Turn those air conditioners off till you get that straightened out." Same way with Hunter's Ridge, BSU, they had generators, so they were in better shape.
Well, thank you, Fred.
Fred, I don't know if you know or John knows the answer to this, Florida Power and Light offers a surge protection plan or package. Do they have the equipment to even offer that anymore?
I think they do, but that's different than the three-phase, a three-phase motor trying to run on one phase.
So that wouldn't help you then, really?
No. Now, then supposedly, some of the newer air conditioners have motors that are built to handle it better, but it's still a bad thing because they just get hot. When you get an electric motor not turning, and it's getting hotter and hotter, and it fits there, you're taking hours of service off of it.
Okay, I got one, one other thing. Two, two weeks ago, at our last council meeting, I reported on Deb Orton and I meeting with Kathleen. I reported on, uh, Deb Orton and I meeting with Kathleen Pasadena to discuss, uh, uh, getting Lee County involved, uh, with the Burt project, getting them to the table. Uh, and she's working on that. Uh, but I would like Council to do a couple of things. One is to just give direction that staff can go ahead and start, uh, work, uh, drafting up a memorandum, interlocal agreement between, uh, Benita Springs and Estero. We can bring the county in later, but it would help in terms of setting the parameters for, uh, the agreement that is necessary prior to get to the actual purchase price documents and so forth. It's work that can be done now and resolved, and we can at least get that done, and, but staff needs to have direction to do that, so if any, unless anybody objects.
No, just to clarify, is, so you're saying Benita and Estero, but does it, do we need to include the counties on those, or no?
We will. Uh, we can include Cayer. We, but we can all, it's gonna be a document such that we can add, uh, uh, Lee County onto it, so if, without objection, I'd like to do that. Uh, and then I'd like to schedule, have staff be able to schedule one-on-ones with each of the council members to bring them up to speed, especially the new council, uh, member, uh, and, uh, and Mike, get them up to speed on where we're, we're at with this project. I think that would be a good thing. And then, we, there is a need for, uh, coming up with a rendering of what the project would look like going through downtown, uh, Benita Springs. Uh, and, uh, that can be done, uh, for not that much money, uh, to, to provide that rendering, showing the railroad tracks as it goes behind Riverside Park, over the river, past the Wonder Garden, and so forth. I think that would be an ideal thing. So, uh, I don't know if, if we, how we can handle that as a spending item, but.
I, I think one of the things we had talked about is we were going to be bringing forward ideas for Riverside Park enhancements, and there was an idea that we would try to tie in any future connections to the Burt Trail. So, there would need, maybe asking for a collaboration with the work the city's already doing, this, that the consultant's already doing with those ideas, and I believe it was mentioned that that was, um, work possibly that was being done pro bono during, from another project. That would be, that design work would not be a cost to the city.
Is, okay, so I'm looking at Deb, it's 'cause it's, she's got a better handle on it than I do. So that's what I wanted to talk.
So just to clarify, I think you're asking direction for staff to be able to initiate, reaching out to council members and the newly elected council members for one-on-one briefings.
Right.
Bringing in our city consultant with Nicole Perino regarding the work we're already doing on Riverside Park, with, uh, consultants that are already in place looking at design work, with the understanding that the design work, uh, is funded by a pro bono program, so it wouldn't be a cost to us.
Right. That's what I'm asking. Without objection.
Yeah, are you done, Chris?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to Fred again, one last time. Uh, thank you to Ray. Um, thank you to the citizens of Benita who re-elected me, uh, last night, and, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, working with our new mayor, Mike Gibson. Congratulations, buddy. You worked hard for it. You really deserve it, and I'm, I'm proud of you. That's all I got.
Hey, Jamie.
Um, just a few things from the fire department. Um, first of all, congratulations to the re-elect Fire Commissioner Steve Lowen, and, um, electing, new-elect Jeff Kerr, um, for the fire commissioners. Uh, Station Seven is moving along. They're not, oh, it's not up and operating quite yet. They're waiting for a few more things to get completed, but they're hoping that's completed soon and up and operating. And we actually have an exorcation team in the, um, Azores competing in world competition right now, so that was pretty neat, um, to hear about that. They raised a lot of funds to get a team over there, and, um, so they're over there competing right now. And I also wanted to thank staff, Laura's staff, for our Halloween event. I think we had another very successful Halloween, um, event this year. We had lots of, lots of children, lots of candy handed out. The kids, once again, were very grateful, thanking us, and it was really neat to see our park filled with everyone there celebrating. And the decorations this year were absolutely amazing. Uh, there were a lot of people downtown the entire weekend, and it was really neat. I went down for three nights and saw everybody walking down, um, the streets downtown, and it's pretty amazing to see, uh, that we have gotten to that point, that our, um, community is coming together, and it was really neat to see. And actually, my, uh, children went out Saturday night, and they, you know, went downtown, and when they got home, they were like, "Mom, it's so cool. We can actually go downtown and have fun in our own city and not have to go to Fort Myers or Naples." So, you know, it's really neat to see from young children, you know, all ages enjoying our downtown.
Great, thank you. Uh, Christmas is coming. We, Holiday in the Park, December third, that's not too far away, and they're starting to put the decorations up, and, uh, that'll be on December third, and then later on in December, we're gonna have a big celebration of the twenty-five years as a city, and, uh, we're all gonna be downtown having fun again, so, um.
Well, yeah, to clear, December eighteenth, that would be here. It's, it's City Hall. It's, it's, we're gonna have the celebration here on December eighteenth.
Okay, but the Holiday in the Park is, is, is December third, which is not that far away, and, uh, that, so the city will be all lit up until the first of the year, and, uh, I'm sure Laura Taylor's gonna do another fantastic job like she did with, with Halloween. Thank you.
Nicole.
Um, as far as Burt, gee, if my, if my yard or my property looked like their railroad, I'd be in jail. I talked to, uh, Irwin Dever, Rick Scott's right-hand lady, and she says the federal government has nothing to do with that. I really think that their price should be coming down if we're gonna put, as the trees are growing up. Uh, it's way out of code. Code enforcement doesn't seem to be able to do anything about it, but that's not gonna help them sell that project to us, in my opinion. There's also a lot of maintenance involved in maintaining fourteen miles worth of railroad bed. The other question is, they're gonna take the steel and sell that, that's worth a lot of money. Can we sell the dirt? We can't build on it, because they might put the railroad back someday in the future. I don't know what we're buying there except for, uh, uh, a walkway through the woods with, with no security is, that's a big expense. I wanna get this project done, but it, it's really ridiculous. Okay, I, I had my blow, and thank you so much for electing me. Uh, I'm, I'm old enough to retire, so, I'm not, and I like Mike. I've known Mike quite a while, and I'm sure he'll do a good job, and I appreciate Benita Springs. I've loved it all my life. So, uh, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Former councilman Alex Grant, former councilman, two thousand four, two thousand eight, and I'm on the historical preservation board with the city. Uh, now, I'm talking about the Benita Springs Elementary School Historic Study, and thank you, uh, city manager, for this little, I, I read the entire, what, hundred thirty-eight pages. Okay, now, a couple of things that I'd like to discuss, with maybe an idea with the city attorney, uh, to do a little investigation. In nineteen twenty-one, uh, the way I understand it, uh, the, uh, Heitman, Mr. Heitman, the developer of Shangri-La, uh, donated the property on Dean Street for a school, and he also built the, built, first building, the nineteen twenty-one building, out of their funds, and I just donated that to the community. Then, sometime, we became a city the first time, and in nineteen twenty-seven, there was an addition to that building. That was the two-story addition to the one-story building. Now, the question is, who paid for the addition to the second building, the nineteen twenty-seven building? Did the city of Benita Springs, that was the original city of Benita Springs, did, did they put any funds into the building of the two-story building? The next question is, did the Lee County School District put in any funds into the construction of the nineteen twenty-seven building, attached to the nineteen twenty-one building? Okay. The third question is, I am assuming Lee County School Districts get federal funds for the school dis, for the, whatever, there's grant money or whatever for the school, uh, uh, district. Am I correct? Is, you can find that out, I assume. If so, when there is a construction project for, let's say, building a thirty, forty million dollar, whatever, school, does, is, is, does part of that money come from the federal government to the school district to build the school? Okay, can I have another moment?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. You know where I'm getting at. Okay, the reason that is, in this document, hundred and thirty-eight pages, there's a situation here that the, uh, what is it? The United States Department of Interior, the National Park Service, has granted, th, this is a, a national historic site, the two buildings. If the school, uh, mon, a school district gets money from the federal government to build the new school district, then, from what I understood, is they cannot tear down the old school, Buildings One and Two, because they're getting federal money for the new school. That's, uh, a little legal job for a council. And, uh, so, oh, also, I have been in contact with the University of Florida, uh, of, you know, I have to get continuing education for my entomology stuff, you know, uh, every year, and that's from the University of Florida. Gainesville, they, so the professors know me there in the entomology department for years and years and years, and I've been doing this, you know, forty-two years, no, forty-four years, how many years. Uh, and anyway, uh, so, I have good contacts with the, uh, University of Florida, and they gave me, uh, the, one of the main professors there knows the professors in the history department that has some expertise in protecting old properties, uh, from demolition, and two, uh, architecture professors in the architecture school. One is the dean there, so, and the go-between, no charge to the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alex. And anybody else with public comment?
Mayor, can I ask Arlene a question? Are we on, is the school on the National Historic Sites, or is it on the National Registry?
The buildings are on the National Register of Historic Places, so there is, there is, Department of Interior has two, two buildings that are on the National Register of Historic Places. Um, I'm not aware of federal funds unless there was additional grant monies, but I know the state of Florida provides funding to, through Lee County School District for buildings, and that is why Lee County was applying for a Chriselis report. Many of you saw that report, where the state, uh, would have to give permission to the Lee County School Board to, uh, demolish any structure, because based on the value of the rebuild, and that's the, that's the discussion of a report we were waiting to receive that the, um, the, that we were, that the school board had said they would provide us with, and they were waiting on that report. So I believe that even might be, have been returned to the school board, but I have not seen that, that actual report yet.
Anyway, you know where to get a hold of me if you need me.
Okay, anything else?
I'm also on the historical, I mentioned that.
Nice, well. Well, folks, goodbye. Thank you. Where are yours?